Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to Toronto City Hall. Could I ask please that you turn off your cellphones? And would you please rise if you are able as the mayor and members of Toronto City Council enter the chamber and remain standing for the National Anthem?
Good afternoon, your worship, members of council, ladies and gentlemen. I am Yuli Watkis, the city clerk, and it is my pleasure to welcome you to the Toronto City Council chamber for the first meeting of our new council. We gratefully acknowledge that City Council is meeting on the traditional territory of the Mississaugas of the New Credit First Nation and home to many diverse Aboriginal peoples. I am now very pleased to invite Liberty Silver to lead us in the singing of our National Anthem.[992.22][992.22](Applause)
Oh, Canada, our home and native land. True patriot love in all thy sons command. Car ton bras sèporte et l'épée, il sèporte la coeur. Ton histoire est une honte paie de plebri en exploit. God keep our land glorious and free. Oh, Canada, we stand on guard for thee.
Please remain standing for a moment of silence and personal reflection. Please be seated. I wish to thank Liberty Silver for her wonderful rendition of our National Anthem, and I would also like to thank Gary Ford from Toronto Fire, Pipers and Drums for leading our procession today. As the city clerk of Toronto, I confirm that I have declared as final the 2014 municipal election results. The members present here today have been duly elected and are entitled to be members of the council of the city of Toronto for a term of office starting December 1st, 2014. To your worship, Mayor Torry and members of council, I extend on behalf of the city manager and the Toronto Public Service our congratulations to you. We look forward to serving our city under your leadership. The first item of business today is the making of the declaration of office by the mayor and the presentation of the chain of office. I now call upon his worship, Mayor Torry, to make the declaration of office. Your worship, please rise and repeat after me. I, John Torry, having been elected to the office of mayor in the city of Toronto, do solemnly promise and declare that.
I, John Torry, having been elected to the office of mayor in the city of Toronto, do solemnly promise and declare that.
I will truly faithfully and impartially exercise this office to the best of my knowledge and ability.
I will truly faithfully and impartially exercise this office to the best of my knowledge and ability.
I have not received and will not receive any payment or reward or promise thereof for the exercise of this office in a biased, corrupt, or any improper manner.
I have not received and will not receive any payment or reward or promise thereof for the exercise of this office in a biased, corrupt, or any improper manner.
I will disclose any pecuniary interest, direct or indirect, in accordance with the Municipal Conflict of Interest Act.
I will disclose any peculiar interest, direct or indirect, in accordance with the Municipal Conflict of Interest Act.
I will be faithful and bear true allegiance to Her Majesty, Queen Elizabeth II, or the reigning sovereign for the time being.
I will be faithful and bear true allegiance to Her Majesty, Queen Elizabeth II, or the reigning sovereign for the time being.
And I make this solemn promise and declaration conscientiously believing it to be true and knowing that it is of the same force and effect as if made under oath.
And I make this solemn promise and declaration conscientiously believing it to be true and knowing that it is of the same force and effect as if made under oath.
Your worship, could you please sign the declaration of office now? Members of council, ladies and gentlemen, it is my great pleasure to introduce Mayor Torry's special guests, Ms. Louise Rousseau and the Honorable William G. Davis. In 2004, Louise Rousseau was the innocent victim of a violent crime. In response to that senseless act, Ms. Rousseau founded the charitable organization Louise Rousseau Wave, working against violence every day. Ms. Rousseau has committed herself to inspiring youth and others to make positive choices in their community. Among the many honors she has received for her inspiring and dedicated work is the Queen Elizabeth II Diamond Jubilee Medal and the Ontario Lieutenant Governor's Community Volunteer Award. I would also like to say a few words about Mayor Torry's other special guest, the Honorable William G. Davis. Mr. Davis's long and distinguished career serving the residents of Ontario started in 1959 when he was elected to the Ontario Legislature. Mr. Davis went on to become the premier of Ontario from 1971 until 1985. In recognition of his significant achievements and dedication to public service, Mr. Davis has been invested as a companion of the Order of Canada and is a recipient of the Order of Ontario. It is my privilege to call upon Ms. Louise Rousseau and the Honorable William G. Davis to present the chain of office to the mayor. Mayor Torry, would you please join Ms. Rousseau and Mr. Davis for the presentation of the chain of office? I confirm that I have the declarations of office taken by all of the members of council and in accordance with the City of Toronto Act 2006, this now completes the organization of the council for the city of Toronto. I will now call on each member of council to come forward to receive a commemorative copy of their declaration of office from Mayor Torry. Ward 1 at Tobico North, councillor Vincent Crisanti. Ward 2 at Tobico North, councillor Rob Ford. Ward 3 at Tobico Centre, councillor Stephen Holliday. Ward 4 at Tobico Centre, councillor John Campbell. Ward 5 at Tobico Lake Shore, councillor Justin De Chiano. Ward 6 at Tobico Lake Shore, councillor Mark Grimes. Ward 7 York West, councillor Giorgio Mamaliti. Ward 8 York West, councillor Anthony Perutza. Ward 9 York Centre, councillor Maria Ajamari. Ward 10 York Centre, councillor James Pasternak. Ward 11 York Southwestern, councillor Francis Nunziata. Ward 12 York Southwestern, councillor Frank DiGiorgio. Ward 13 Parkdale High Park, councillor Sarah Doucette. Ward 14 Parkdale High Park, councillor Gord Perks. Ward 15 Eglington Lawrence, councillor Josh Cole. Ward 16 Eglington Lawrence, councillor Kristin Carmichael-Grebb. Ward 17 Davenport, councillor Caesar Palazzo. Ward 18 Davenport, councillor Anna Bylaw. Ward 19 Trinity Spadina, councillor Mike Leighton. Ward 20 Trinity Spadina, councillor Joe Cressy. Ward 21 St Paul's, councillor Joe Mahavik. Ward 22 St Paul's, councillor Josh Matlow. Ward 23 Willowdale, councillor John Fillion. Ward 24 Willowdale, councillor David Shiner. Ward 25 Don Valley West, councillor Jay Robinson. Ward 26 Don Valley West, councillor John Burnside. Ward 27 Toronto Centre Rosedale, councillor Kristin Wong-Tan. Ward 28 Toronto Centre Rosedale, councillor Pam McConnell. Ward 29 Toronto Danforth, councillor Mary Fragadakis. Ward 30 Toronto Danforth, councillor Paula Fletcher. Ward 31 Beaches East York, councillor Janet Davis. Ward 32 Beaches East York, councillor Mary Margaret McMahon. Ward 33 Don Valley East, councillor Shelley Carroll. Ward 34 Don Valley East, councillor Denzo Linen Wong. Ward 35 Scarborough Southwest, councillor Michelle Barardanetti. Ward 36 Scarborough Southwest, councillor Gary Crawford. Ward 37 Scarborough Centre, councillor Michael Thompson. Ward 38 Scarborough Centre, councillor Glenn DeBaermaker. Ward 39 Scarborough Agent Court, councillor Jim Carey Janis. Ward 40 Scarborough Agent Court, councillor Norm Kelly. Ward 41 Scarborough Rouge River, councillor Chin Lee. Ward 42 Scarborough Rouge River, councillor Raymond Cho. Ward 43 Scarborough East, councillor Paul Ainsley. Ward 44 Scarborough East, councillor Ron Moser. Members of council, would you please rise if you are able? Ladies and gentlemen, I present to you the mayor and members of Toronto City Council for the 2014 to 2018 term. It is now my great pleasure to call upon Mayor Torry's special guest Louise Rousseau to give her remarks.
Thank you. Good afternoon. What an amazing day it is for Toronto and for our mayor, our councillors, and their families. I'm absolutely honoured to be part of this special ceremony and to be touched to be Mayor Torry's special guest. It's simply overwhelming at so many levels and I'm very happy to share this special occasion with my family, my husband Sam, and two of my children, Krista and Stephen. And I'm honoured to be sitting next to Mr. Davis and his wife Kathleen. Thank you. I'd like to start by congratulating Mayor Torry, all returning and newly elected councillors, and councillor Giorgio Mammoliti, who represents my ward. I am sure that this is also a wonderful day for your families and I'm very proud of your, who are very proud of your success. The voters of Toronto have spoken and have entrusted all of you to work together to build a better, even better Toronto. It is a new era for Toronto and I'm confident that each and every one of you are up to the task. I first met John Torry in 2005, a year after my injury, at a Mother's Day event. He introduced himself to me and my family and right away I was taken aback by his caring approach. He was sincere in his words of encouragement and interested in my aspirations to engage youth and to make Toronto a even greater city. He cared both about me and my family. Most of you here have heard my story or recall the media attention it captured. Soon after the lengthy hospitalisation, I knew I had to bring my hopes to reality. I wanted to share with you why I started the Louise Rousseau Wave, which stands for Working Against Violence Every Day. The night of April 2004 changed my life forever. It's much more painful and complicated than anyone could ever imagine or understand. Its ripple effects are enormous and never-ending. And the wave was created because I didn't want anyone else to suffer the senseless act of violence. I didn't want to see the suffering in another family's eyes as I did in my family. And I knew I needed to move forward. I wanted to support our youth. I believed in our future leaders and their ability to make the right choices. I believe in Toronto the good. Our charity mission statement is centred on the principles of respect, responsibility, and role of leadership. Our goal is to inspire people and youth, young people especially, as well as all members of the community. We are dedicated to working together to help our youth make positive choices, helping them initiate projects that make our schools and communities a safer place to live, learn, and play. Every year we host over 1,300 teachers at our Empowering Youth Day. Our Inspiring Day focuses on issues that pertain to youth. It encourages them to take charge of their life choices. My favourite part of the day is when we celebrate young people who... My favourite part of the day is when we celebrate young people who have made a positive difference in the community and in their schools. We have so many wonderful young leaders and through Wave, my hope is always to inspire another student in the audience to also make a difference. Our next Empowering Youth Day is on April 29th. Please come and celebrate with us. And I know, John, that if your schedule permits, you'll be there as you have been so many times before. This brings me to tell you a story about John and his wife Barbara. I will never forget a Wave event that they attended. It was their 30th wedding anniversary and a beautiful sunny Sunday. Instead of celebrating this with this big milestone with their children or even as a couple, they shared it with me and 700 other Torontonians, and I know Chief Blair was there, and Shelley Carroll and Giorgio Memelidi, and I thank you for just for the support you gave us. This says a lot about our new mayor and his wife and their longstanding commitment to our city. I have seen for several years now that John Torry genuinely cares about Toronto, its people, its safety and especially the youth. And I know that, John, as a mayor of this great city, along with other councillors, will continue to believe in youth as our future leaders. What I also know is how important it is to give back to the community. Regardless of who you are, your abilities, your age, we can each contribute at some level to make a difference in someone else's life. And I know not just from personal experience but also from talking to, excuse me, community leaders, that John Torry is genuine, caring and a dedicated community builder. He wants Toronto to grow into an even better, stronger city. He has the skills and the drive to lead us there. I am sure all of you here today will work together to build this city in a positive way, remembering our youth, the poor, supporting the poor and the most vulnerable, and creating Toronto that is truly accessible for all people. In closing, I trust John and all our councillors will work in collaboration for the people of Toronto. I believe that under John Torry's leadership, we will become one Toronto and one of the world's greatest and most livable cities. God bless each and every one of you and thank you, and thank you for this honour. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms Rousseau, for your courage and your inspiring words. I now call upon your worship, Mayor John Torry, to give his first meeting address.
I'm Adam Clerk and special guest Louise Rousseau, Honourable William Davis and Mrs Davis, city officials, members of City Council and welcome, most welcome guests, all. Louise, thank you for those wonderful words. I'll mention you again in a moment. I was just a little disconsidered that you had to raise that 30th anniversary business because as much as Barb and I love you, I was in some trouble for attending an event but it would only have been for you on our 30th wedding anniversary and so far, so good after that, so it's going fine. May I, before I get into my more formal remarks, say a word or two about a couple of other people? First of all, I would just like to say to councillor Norm Kelly, just a sincere word of thanks on behalf of the council and the people of the city of Toronto for your unique contribution in the past years, and I just wanted to say thank you for that. I said during the election campaign, when Rob Ford had to withdraw because of his health challenges, that I would miss him at the debates. And I said that I knew that's where he would want to be, at the debates, seeking this office that I'm so privileged to hold today and that he held for the last four years. And I'll tell you that one of the reasons I said I would miss him at the debates was because it really was, I mean, you sent that brother of yours afterwards, but when you were debating with me, here's exactly what would happen, ladies and gentlemen, is that we'd be at the debates and at some moment in time in the middle of it, this is absolutely true, he would turn to me and he'd say, "John", he'd say, "What's on this page right here? It's going to lay you out in about two minutes. You're going to be out on the floor, cold, done, finished." Absolutely true, he would, and then I'd just say to him, you know, "Okay, bring it on." But I think that says a lot about Rob Ford, and this is totally out of order, but it doesn't matter yet because we're not in a formal meeting, we're in a ceremony meeting. I want to sort of go totally out of order and ask everybody in this room to move a motion thanking Rob Ford for his continued public service and wishing him a complete and speedy recovery and a return to this place as soon as possible. All in favour, say aye. Carried unanimously. I was asked yesterday by a journalist whether I was just tickled to hold this office. And as my colleagues will know, you have to think quickly in answering questions like that, and in seconds I had decided not to make any wisecracks in response. That was my first good decision. But what I did say was something that I meant very sincerely then, as I do today. And I know I speak on behalf of all of the members of City Council and saying in the presence of our guests today, that what you do feel is a huge sense of privilege, having the chance to serve your city and to serve the public. And for that, I want to say on my own behalf, and I'm sure I speak on behalf of every other member of council today, here today, say thank you to the people who sent us here, and perhaps just as important, those who tried to send someone else. Because we're all here now to represent every single person who lives in this city that we are so blessed to call home. And I think I can also speak on behalf of every member of City Council and saying thank you to our families, which are represented here today. Family members end up deeply involved in public service too, perhaps not always by direct choice, and for all the sacrifices, big and small, the pillow talk which ends up constituting very valuable advice, and for your love and patience, we all say thank you. Let's have a round of applause for our guests here today from the council. If you will allow me on this day, a personal word about my own family, I want to acknowledge the presence of my mother, Liz Torry. In our family, public service and giving back was a given, and there was no better example set than by my mother. And she continues to set it as a tireless volunteer for many causes, though given her occasional outspoken ways, I'm fortunate that never extended to public service, public office, that is. I remember my dad today, too. He was a shining example of integrity, hard work and decency. And I know that he's here, and I know that because I'm wearing his tie to prove it. My siblings, my sister Jennifer, my brothers Jeff and Mike are here. They are people of significant accomplishment and public service, and they've all been immensely supportive of my various public endeavours. I'm proud of our four children who are also here, John, Christopher, Susan and George, and our four grandchildren who aren't here because we weren't sure that they could behave long enough to be in something like this. But I think the children in this chamber, children of all ages who are children of people in public life, have a sense of what is involved in having a parent or parents who are in public life. And we are very grateful for their endless patience and love. And speaking of endless patience and love, there is Barb, my wife. I have come to understand better and better in the last year or so, just how unique the perspective of a partner or spouse is in keeping your feet on the ground and keeping you on track. After almost 37 years, Barb knows me and understands me better than anyone else. Not that she would necessarily put that on her resume as a particular point of pride. And I will just say that beyond love, we have a great partnership and I wouldn't be here without her. And I want to say, and I want to have a round of applause for her, for heaven's sake. I want to say one further word about a couple who may as well be family. My political mentor, my friend, the Honourable William Davis, is here today, of course. He was previously introduced and helped put on the chain of office together with his wife Kathleen. I've worked with a lot of elected officials over 45 years, most of that time, as you know, as an advisor to elected officials. There is no one more decent, more caring, more balanced from among that group than Premier Davis, and I'm honoured that he and Mrs Davis are here today to join all of us. I said that I would also say an additional word inadequately, I'm sure, about Louise Rousseau. I said many times when I was a broadcaster that together with my father and Bill Davis and Ted Rogers, she was and is one of my heroes. To see someone who fought back from unspeakable adversity, to devote her life to helping to ensure the kids in our city don't get left behind and are themselves given a fighting chance, is inspiring. And it was a choice I made quickly and comfortably to have her here today because she's speaking, of course, on her own behalf, but I think it also signals some of the issues which will be fundamentally important to me during this term in office. And so Louise, thank you so much and your family for honouring us with your presence here today. Today, we observe not the victory of a group of people, but the renewal of our civic democracy. On October 27th, Torontonians turned out in record numbers to decide the future direction of their city. Five weeks ago, voters asked their elected officials to get to work on the priorities that matter to them. Better transit, better housing, more jobs and an end to the gridlock that is choking our streets. An end to the division that has paralysed at times City Hall itself over the last few years. Accountable and effective leadership and careful stewardship of their tax dollars. And they want us to act to reduce the isolation experienced by so many on account of a lack of housing, the lack of a job or the ignoring of mental health issues, just to name a few. The bottom line, Torontonians want results and it is now up to all of us in this chamber to deliver them. The great industrialist and philanthropist Andrew Carnegie once said that teamwork is the fuel that allows common people to achieve uncommon results. I know that in this chamber, going forward in the next four years, we can achieve uncommon results. And that's because I know we can come together on behalf of those who sent us here. Together as a council, I believe we are, the facts show, that we are a group of skilled and dedicated men and women. All of you, all of us, want what is best for your ward and for your city, and I want the same things for your wards and for our city. And in the days and months ahead, we will be asked to bring judgement to matters large and small. And so let us be honoured and humbled by our responsibilities but innovative and determined in their execution. As your mayor, I bring a sense of urgency to getting Toronto back on track, but I also bring a sense of perspective. Torontonians are not asking us for miracles. They don't expect miracles of their elected representatives. What they want is visible progress, and soon, on a few critical and shared priorities. Transit and gridlock top this list at this moment in history. And so on those subjects, it's time to get to work. We will get SmartTrack up and running in seven years. We will build the Scarborough subway and we will work with the TTC to improve existing service for its 1.5 million daily riders. Torontonians want a future where we make intelligent decisions that will reduce gridlock. And so we will get to work. We will coordinate construction, we will synchronise traffic lights and we will do everything we can to see that the laws are enforced. The damage to families, to businesses and to the environment caused by out-of-control traffic simply can't continue. And it is up to us to do something about it, and I know that we can. Torontonians also want a mayor who can work with the council and the other levels of government to get things done. Yesterday, I had the pleasure of meeting with Premier Kathleen Wynn. We discussed the need to work together on transit and on traffic. We discussed the need for renewed investment in our city and help with housing. I look forward to having the same discussion with Prime Minister Stephen Harper. The case I did put forward, the case I will put forward, is clear. Toronto is the engine of growth in Ontario and Canada and must remain strong economically and socially. These are important relationships with these two governments that need to be renewed and need to be strengthened. And I will build trust, I will restore faith and I will regain respect for the city of Toronto at Queen's Park and in Ottawa. And I think this will bring results for our city. Torontonians also want good, well-paying jobs. That's a big reason we're going to build rapid transit and improved transit generally, including SmartTrack, to connect people to jobs and jobs to people and bring opportunity to all four corners of the city. Because if we're being honest, it is not present the way it needs to be in all four corners of the city and everywhere in between. We will ask government partners and the business sector and organised labour to team up and foster opportunities for our youth. They have shown, all of them, including business and labour working with government, they can do it before and we have to have them do it over and over and over again. We will create together the right business and tax environment so that companies continue to choose Toronto. And each and every one of us on this council, beginning with me in the mayor's office and under the continued leadership of councillor Michael Thompson, we must all become business ambassadors for the city. When he was up receiving his declaration, I said to him, "Sell, sell, sell." And I'm counting on him and counting on his continued leadership, together with all of us and with me, to make sure that that happens. Because we can no longer assume, and I think we know this, that jobs and investment will beat a path to our door. We must put out the welcome mat and ensure that we seed and we grow the clusters that spell economic success and that spell those jobs for the people, young and of other ages, in areas like high-tech and financial services and film and animation and bio-science and food processing. I could go on, but that's just to name a few. And you know what? We have another challenge in front of us as well, if we're being honest about this. We have to bring the operations of the city itself into the 21st century. We need to get rid of waste and modernise both the services we offer and the way they're delivered. And that's not a criticism of anybody or anything. It is simply a statement of the fact, I've seen it in the last four weeks as I've gone through this transition and the incredibly professional briefings provided by our incredibly professional and competent public service, and I thank them for that, as I'm sure I'll have opportunity to thank them for lots of things over the next four years. But I've also seen that the processes and the way things work around here are things that are generations behind, in some cases, what is done elsewhere. And we cannot afford to be in a situation where complacency and standstill thinking causes this city to fall behind its competitors and causes it to fall behind the expectations people have of us. It's ironic, when you think about it, that a big city and a big city government like this often is way behind its own citizens and its own residents in terms of how to use something like technology to get things done better. And we have to fix that. That's our responsibility, not theirs. I want Toronto, as one of North America's great cities, to lead from the front of the pack because that too, I think, is going to help us attract investment. I want us in every single area, including some of the toughest areas that seem to be almost insurmountable challenges, I want us to be more opportunistic and open to change. Our role is not to fight the future, it is to be the future. The place in North America and the place in the world where new Canadians and young people find that first good job they've been looking for, where entrepreneurs want to come to launch their startups, not just the ones who are here, but ones who come here specifically because this is the place they want to establish their business. And speaking of the future, none of us can be satisfied with the snapshot that has emerged in recent years of a city unfairly and unjustly, and I'm sure, not deliberately, but unfairly and unjustly divided by income and by class and by geography. None of us can rest easy. We can't put our heads down on the pillow at night and go to sleep. We can't put our heads down on the pillow at night and go to sleep, knowing that 150,000 Toronto kids are growing up in poverty, or that 15 neighborhoods in our city have poverty rates of 40% or more. I have devoted a good part of my adult life as a private citizen to combating this, and I believe the job that I now have gives me, working together with you and everybody else, every single citizen, every faith leader, every person who can help, the best chance to continue to fight this. And I'm especially grateful... Yes, indeed, please. I signed on during the election campaign, as many of you did before and during, to a poverty reduction pledge that said we were going to develop for this city a poverty reduction strategy. And I said at that time, and I repeat here today, that I want one that has got real targets and real timelines in it, and real things we can do together, and maybe a few things that we call upon some other people to help us to do. And I am delighted that councillor and soon-to-be Deputy Mayor Pam McConnell will help lead the way, working with others in developing a real poverty reduction strategy for the city of Toronto. A Toronto with these levels of poverty is not the Toronto we remember, those of us who grew up here, and it cannot be the Toronto that we leave to our children. We are One Toronto, and that means one for all and all for one. And as mayor, I ask you to join me in the months and years ahead in ending the neglect that leaves behind too many citizens in our city's isolated neighborhoods. Join me in tackling the city's unacceptable youth jobless rate, and work with me to build a strong, inclusive city of opportunity from Atobaco to Scarborough and from North York to the waterfront. One where every single resident, without exception, feels confident in their government, confident in their police, and confident in their own future. We have a tremendous amount of work to do, and it begins right here, right now. As your mayor, I pledge to you an open door and an open mind. I will not let ideology of any kind stand in the way of a good idea or doing what is right. With strong leadership and honest partnership, we will move this city forward together. We live in a good city, a really good city. But our goal in the next four years must be unite us as One Toronto and turn a good city into a truly great one. I discuss this often during the campaign. We have values that we clearly understand as Torontonians and as Canadians, and they do say probably first and foremost that we don't leave anybody behind. And so forgetting about ideology, and forgetting about partisan labels, and forgetting about all those kinds of things, I don't think we can look ourselves in the mirror and make sure that people know that we are a truly great city unless and until we honor those values by our work that we're going to do here together and make sure that there really aren't people who are left behind. We want to create a city where there are opportunities for all, and make no mistake from me, I believe the best way you are going to make people's lives better is through a good, lasting, productive job and better employment for everybody in the family, starting with the young people and working right up through the family. There are far too many people with huge talent in this city. If we're being frank about it, many of them who are newcomers, and many of them who have skin colors other than my own, who are underemployed or unemployed, and they're people with great skill and talent and determination, they just want a chance to prove themselves. And I think here in government, we can offer them that chance and do things to make sure that they have it. We want to create... I think we all want to create here a safe and prosperous and caring and fair and humane place to live and to work, a place where in reality, we don't leave anybody behind. A Toronto that we can be truly proud of. We're proud of it now, but let's make ourselves prouder of the city. I know we can do this. I know we can do this. I know we can act in common to achieve some very uncommon results. Better days are ahead. Together, let's finish the job that voters began on October 27th and build one great city, One Toronto. I found the button to press to turn on the microphone, because now begins the scary part where I actually chair the meeting, as someone who's never been in this chamber before. But members of council, my letter advising of my appointments to the positions of deputy mayor and chairs of the standing committees was distributed with the agenda as item CC1.7. It is my pleasure to also introduce them here today. And I would ask members, would they please rise if you're able and remain standing as I call your name? Deputy Mayor, councillor Denzel Menon Wong. Chair of the Community Development and Recreation Committee, councillor James Pasternak. Chair of the Economic Development Committee, councillor Michael Thompson. Chair of the Government Management Committee, councillor Paul Ainsley. Chair of the Licensing and Standards Committee, councillor Caesar Palacio. Chair of the Parks and Environment Committee, councillor Michelle Berardini. Chair of the Planning and Growth Management Committee, councillor David Shiner. And Chair of the Public Works and Infrastructure Committee, councillor Jay Robinson. Now I gather it might be the case that we'll have those individuals, members of council who are committee chairs, to come up here, and we're going to take a photograph, which Members of council, my recommended membership for the Striking Committee was also distributed with the agenda as item CC1.8. Deputy Mayor Menon Wong, you have a motion on the item?
I don't have the... Actually, the technology's not lit up here to show me anything. It's actually blank at the moment.
That City Council adopt item CC1.8 on the recommended membership of the Striking
Are there any speakers to the item? All those in favor of the item? Recorded vote, all right. I was told this would likely happen. Now, I don't have the technology, but you're doing what you have to do, Madam Clerk, to make that happen. My screens are blank at the moment.
The item is adopted unanimously. Forty-five in favor.
Thank you. Councillor Holliday, you have a motion to introduce the confirmatory bill?
That please be granted to introduce a bill to confirm to the point, the introduction of this motion, the proceedings of the inaugural council meeting, one on December 2nd, 2014.
His first council vote. Shall Lee be granted to introduce this bill? Carried, shall this bill be passed and hereby declared as a bylaw? All those in favor? Are we having a recorded vote?
Yes.
I can say no to a recorded vote? I didn't say... I was told I couldn't. Anyway, I'm just glad you're making your presence felt. I think that's wonderful. Ah, now I have the screen in front of me. Very nice. And I have to vote?
Councillor Ford, please.
There we go.
The motion to adopt the confirming bill carries unanimously forty-five in favor.
Thank you very much. Members of council, before we recess for today, I would like to remind you that the community councils will meet tomorrow morning at 9:30 to elect their chairs and vice-chairs as follows. Atobaco-York Community Council will meet in Committee Room 2. North York Community Council will meet in Committee Room 4. Scarborough Community Council will meet in Committee Room 3. And Toronto and East York Community Council will meet in Committee Room 1. The Striking Committee will also meet at 10 o'clock tomorrow in the morning in Committee Room 1 to consider member appointments and the 2015 schedule of meetings for council and for its committees. This meeting is now recessed until 2:00 PM tomorrow, Wednesday, December 3rd. I hope that members of council and guests will join me in the rotunda for a reception. Thank you.